Welcome you to the Monday, March first, two thousand and twenty one, um, City Council meeting. First up, we would like to approve the minute of February fifteenth council meeting.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, this is Judy.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is, um, hearing of public concerns, may I have anybody on the phone?
We have no one at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is an ordinance number, um, item number three, Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number ten, two thousand and twenty one, an ordinance providing for the appropriament of investment income for the city of Bryan and repealing ordinance number one, two thousand and sixteen, and declaring an emergency. This is an apportionment that we have to do when we create a new fund. Back in June, when we created the local coronavirus relief fund, um, we set up Fund Two Thirty and had to distribute by federal order to interest to it. And this is to, um, put that in place and make sure that it was effective during that timeframe. We did account for it correctly, but the paperwork never caught up with it, so we're gonna go ahead and correct that tonight, please.
I'll move to suspend, John.
I'll second, Rick.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, this is Judy.
I'll second, this is Jim.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up, item number four in ordinance, Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number eleven, two thousand and twenty one, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending March thirty first, two thousand and twenty one. This is a transfer request of four hundred thousand dollars from the one percent income tax fund to the one oh one general fund for general spending purposes. There's also a transfer request from the half percent income tax fund to the three oh five police fire building debt retirement fund of a hundred thousand dollars and from the fire department fund to the police fire building debt retirement fund of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Total amount of transfer requested is seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I would also like to inform council that we are now, um, as of December, we will be halfway through our bond obligation on the police fire building. And we'll owe just a little over three million dollars at this point.
This is Judy, I move to suspend.
I'll second, John.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, this is Jim.
I'll second, this is Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Item number five is a resolution, Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number nine, two thousand and twenty one, a resolution providing for the establishment of a new fund. We are being advised by the federal government, as you know, with the new stimulus package about to be released, that the city of Bryan could be eligible for additional coronavirus relief funds. This is to set up a new fund for that, it will not have the same fund number as the two thousand and twenty coronavirus relief fund. So it'll be fund number two thirty five. We'd like to go ahead and have that established in case the monies come in in March prior to a council meeting. Um, we wanna be ready for it, so we can get it received on the books should it come in.
I'll move to suspend, this is John.
I'll second, this is Jim.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Move to adopt, Rick.
Second, Judy.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Item number six is an ordinance, um, Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number twelve, two thousand and twenty one, an ordinance providing for the appropria- apportionment of investment income for the city of Bryan and repealing ordinance number ten, two thousand and twenty one, and declaring an emergency. As we just created and established the new Fund Two Thirty Five for the two thousand and twenty one coronavirus relief, I would like to go ahead and establish this interest, um, ordinance as well, so that should the money come in and we have interest in it in the month of March or April, whenever the funds may arrive, we're ready.
I'm motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, Judy.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, John.
I'll second, Rick.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Item number seven is an ordinance, Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number thirteen, two thousand and twenty one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Eminem Asphalt LTD for the project known as two thousand and twenty one Parkview Ave and Belmont Ave improvements.
Good evening, everyone, uh, we received bids on February tenth for this project, uh, we had five good bidders on it. I've submitted a letter as well that, uh, showed the ranges were from about four hundred and sixty-three thousand to five hundred and ninety-four thousand. Uh, my estimate was five hundred and two thousand for the project. Um, we reviewed the bids and we would request that you suspend the rules and award this project to Eminem Asphalt Limited of Eden for four sixty-three, three fifty-four, twenty. I don't know if you recall, they had done the, uh, first phase of the Mayberry Drive project here a few years ago. Uh, did real good work on it and, uh, I'm pleased with them, so, um, with that, I would request you do that. Uh, construction should start probably in May. Um, what we'll do is we'll get the bid books around, I get the contracts executed here in the next thirty days. We'll get a pre-construction meeting scheduled and they can get rolling. Uh, the contract says the completion date is August fourteenth, pending any weather delays.
Brian, is this a, uh, what, what kind of, uh, um, street work is this? Is this gonna be full depth and strip and?
Yes.
curb and gutters?
Yep. Full depth removal, um, the water department had put a new water line in on the two blocks of Parkview a few years ago. We had done sanitary sewer on Belmont. Um, this last block of Belmont is one of the last ones in the neighborhood there that needs finished off, so we're kinda tagging that. And the Parkview, this block is the worst of the ones in the area. You know, the next few years, I'm not gonna say how many years, because, you know, there's a lot going on, but we wanna continue and do more of Parkview and maybe do Blakesley, you know, in that particular area here. But, uh, but yeah, for the most part, it's full depth street removal, we'll add some storm taps in for the residents and do, uh, storm sewer extensions.
Okay. I'll move to suspend. Rick?
I'll second, Judy.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Next up is item number eight, a resolution, Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number ten, two thousand and twenty one, a resolution to accept a donation from vested interest in Canines, V I Canines dot org, for a canine vest, first aid kit, and Narcan kit for the city of Bryan Police Dog.
Hello, I'm requesting that we, uh, give permission to, or receive these items. Uh, we just got the call, the dog back from the kennel and the kennel, um, that he comes from, B L K, has always been, uh, receivers of these vests and everything, it's gonna save us, uh, quite a bit of money if we're able to get the vest for free for the canine, so that's what we're requesting.
That's looked pretty good on channel thirteen last week.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, I was impressed how well you look. Uh, geez.
It's a good looking dog, though.
Yeah, the dog looked very good, told the handler, and it's ve- it was very good, uh, P R for Brian. I told the mayor that, like, that night or the next day, it's a good, it's a good, uh, it was on for like five to seven minutes, I mean, usually it's like a thirty second shot, so we got a lot of good P R out of that.
We're expecting a lot of good things out of him.
Yes, yeah, I will, uh, uh, move to suspend. I will second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I move to approve, Jim.
I'll second, Judy.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is number, uh, excuse me, number nine, another resolution, Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number eleven, two thousand and twenty one, a resolution to approve the joint solid waste management plan update for the joint four county district solid waste management district of Williams, Defiance, Fulton, and Paulding Counties.
This council, um, Tyson Ingstrom, Jerry Lemmons, and myself represent Bryan on this group, and it is a very large group, obviously, with multiple members throughout all four counties. We sat through, um, a couple years of meetings going over line by line this plan as a requirement of the EPA. And this board, um, which is actually stationed out of Defiance, has asked for all of the councils involved to approve and support the plan.
I'll motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, Judy.
I'll second, Rick.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Up next is item number ten, resignation from the police.
Hello again, I have resignation from, from Trump and Rose. Uh, he writes, "The work I have done as police officer has been difficult, but I have enjoyed it greatly. I believe my time in the department has been benefit and will benefit me greatly and keep, uh, will help me in my future endeavors. I wish everyone, I've had the pleasure of meeting, the best with their careers. Thank you and all the officers for the guidance and teachings. Corey resigned on two seventeen twenty one."
I'm motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you and, uh, we wish, uh, Corey the best on his endeavors.
Absolutely.
Thank you, chief. Up next, we have, um, item number eleven, a resignation from recycling.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Uh, Gary Ha- Gary Hussey from the recycling department turned in his two weeks' notice resignation last minute. So his last effective day is March fifth. And I ask that you accept the resignation.
I'll move to, uh, accept with regret, uh, Mr. Hussey's resignation.
I'll second.
Judy?
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyson. Up next, we have, um, item number twelve, a resignation from the fire department.
Good evening, council, uh, you have before you a letter from probationary firefighter Christopher Roberts. Uh, Christopher has resigned from the fire department, uh, due to some family reasons. I ask that, uh, council go ahead and accept this.
I move to accept, this is Judy.
I'll second, John.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Up next is item number thirteen, hiring of seasoned employees for the park.
Good evening, council.
Ben?
Hey, Ben.
Um, if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to handle these as, as two separate items. Um, the first one is, um, a list of our seasonal part-time employees. All of them are returning from two years ago. Um, we did not hire them all last year because of COVID. Um, but our hope is to return to normal this summer. Um, all of their wages are set according to ordinance, um, that you guys passed earlier this year. They will start working on an as need basis. Um, but wasn't sure when our next council meeting would be, so I wanted to go ahead and get them on in case we, uh, were ready for them, uh, prior to our next meeting.
I'm motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The second, the second one you should have in front of you is a letter from me, um, asking council's permission to hire Jeffrey Tonis, um, to the Parks and Recreation Department as the event coordinator for the Bryan City Amphitheater, or Fountain City Amphitheater. Um, we went through an extensive interview process, uh, had a lot of good candidates. Jeffrey really meets, we think what we're looking for at this time. Um, I would like to pay him fifteen dollars an hour, maximum a thousand hours for the year two thousand and twenty one, and then revisit the job and the pay, uh, when we get to the end of the year to kinda gauge how many hours it's gonna take, um, to do the job we're asking him to do.
I move to approve, this is Judy.
I'll second, this is Jim.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Up next, we have permission to post.
Yes, with Gary's resignation from the recycling department, I am asking the, your permission to post the position of vehicle operator training for the recycling department.
Yeah, I move to approve, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then up next, thank you, Tyson, then up next, we have the mayor asking for in-person meetings.
Yes, um, I had a couple council members reach out to me after our county turned orange last week, which was great news for our county and community. Um, so what I would need is a formal motion and second and a vote on whether you would want to move back in person with the option of virtual, as you know, most of the department heads will stay virtual, um, because we go over our ten-person limit, but it also would allow small numbers of public to come in and attend the meetings. Um, Cliff would be working the door downstairs, so we could really limit that to one or two people at a time, even if we were discussing a big issue. So, April fifth would be that first date, so if you are in favor of coming back to in-person, and again, you still would have the option of virtual, uh, I just need a motion, second, and vote.
I'm in favor of going back to the council chambers, this is Judy, I make a motion to that effect.
I'll second, Rick.
Do you want any discussion with this at all, or? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I just have a question, so if, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm, I'm fine with it. Um, uh, is, is, but if we did wanna go virtual for whatever reason, we, we just, we just like tell you in advance there? Oh, okay. Cause I, I'm not sure if I would or wouldn't, it kinda depends, but yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, I think if you ten, or intend to be virtual, you just let me know and I'll send you the link, like I do now. And the rest of us in council chambers, the mics have been fixed, so everyone should be able to have a good connection.
Okay.
So, I will also tell you, the state legislature is working on legislation that would potentially long-term allow for these virtual attendance. And then local councils and mayors and commissioners would be able to set local rules as far as if we did need you to come in and sign things. Um, but they have found that if people are traveling, it can still get paid for the meeting if they're in attendance virtually, and it has been a little bit of a change in benefit throughout the state.
And if anything happens where this pandemic gets worse, Carrie, we can always go back to virtual again, right?
Yeah, certainly, and, and I made that call, um, in, I think, December for everyone, because we were, our, our hospital numbers were horrible and I emailed all of you and made sure it was okay, but we didn't have a meeting to actually set the motion. But I'd like to formally do that if, um, you wanna go back to meeting in person, it allows the paper to get that information out to the public as well.
Thank you.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, we're gonna stay at five thirty?
I think that that's worked for everyone, and that's what we set the ordinance at the beginning of the year for the meetings to be five thirty. So if that ever becomes a conflict for you, you just have to let me know and we can go through the formal vote again.
Up next, we have a two thousand and twenty annual report from the street department.
Okay, I'll quickly go through this, you all should have copies of this, and like everybody else, if you ever have a question about anything, just ask and hopefully I can have the answer or get the answer. But starting with the winter of nineteen and twenty, we spread roughly seven hundred tons of salt at a cost of fifty-six thousand dollars and applied thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five gallons of brine at the cost of nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Then last year, which between the street department and we ended up hiring Eminem Tree Service to cut down some trees because we couldn't get some because of COVID. We removed forty hazardous trees from city terraces last year, along with all the other routine jobs. Then you see on the, the Durapatcher page, we did not use our Durapatcher at all. That's something we have to use in the spring and summer, and with COVID, we didn't hang up the time to do that, that's one of the things that got put on the back burner because we picked up all the recycling and all that to the landfill for those first few COVID, we didn't, what, what was the money and what to do with it? So that's, you'll see on that page that we did, it says we didn't catch any pop holes, that means we didn't catch any pop holes with the dirt. We still catch, we just use cold, we didn't use that machine. And then the landfill report. If you go, I know you guys don't have last, in front of you were two years ago, but I did the math. With hauling all that extra recyclables through the landfill for those few months, and I think a lot of people were, had to stay home, so they had nothing better to do than redo their house and fix and clean their house. We hauled two hundred and thirty-one more tons of trash to the landfill last year than we did the year before. So, that's why those numbers are a lot higher than they were the year before. But cemetery, we had forty burials and twenty-one bases for, we, we average probably somewhere between thirty and forty burials a year. So with everything that went on last year, that number didn't go up because it's COVID, it's still the average number of burials per year.
Interesting.
And then the recycling center is way down because we took all that to the landfill for those three, three and a half months, and that we figured out that, how to safely pick it up and deal with it. So the total pounds that the recycling took in and sold was nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five pounds. And the total sales for the year, with everything they took in, processed, unveiled, and sold, was only thirty-three thousand, thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents the year before, which in the annual report, I figured out this year, when I look back at this year's, that total number was wrong. In two thousand and nineteen, it should have been fifty-six thousand dollars instead of seventy-two thousand, which is what it said. So we're on, we're down twenty-two or three thousand dollars from two thousand and eighteen, or two thousand and nineteen, sorry. That's pretty much it, unless you have questions.
Yeah, Tyson, I have a question about trees.
Okay.
Uh, I was asked and, and, um, didn't, don't, didn't and don't understand the tree scenario, and it's probably because it's somewhat convoluted, depending on where the tree's at. But, um, for example, when we bid on trees to be cut down and they're on, uh, let's, they did it this last summer on High Street, right, I think?
Yeah.
On East Lot Street, so when they cut the, those trees down, that the contractor that we con, that gets contracted with, are they responsible to take the trees away, are, is our street department, or is B M U? And I, I looked at the persons and I really don't know, so since this came up, is there a short version? Or I can come in and talk to you if it's all?
No, yeah, I can try to explain it quickly, and Ben might be able to help too. The trees on High Street that they spent a few weeks in here trimming, all those back from the road, actually court- road, actually Corr and the Parks and Rec hired them to do that tree trimming. We only, street department along with the electric department only do the whole removal. And those are the dead hazardous trees on the terrace in between the sidewalk and the curb. Those are the trees that got cut down last year. And we do the, in the wintertime, we try to do them in the wintertime when the ground is frozen because then it doesn't tear up the yards as bad.
Okay. No, that's helpful. That's helpful. So it can be one of three. It's generally the Brian Parks and Rec that contracts to have like trees trimmed. Is it like the court, the, okay, the Arbor?
Yeah, and, and BMU through, I can't think of the name of it at the moment.
They use Ashland?
Yes, but who's that through though? Anyway, BMU also hired a trimming crew and they clear power lines. And that's, those trucks in town a lot throughout the summer too. And that's through BMU.
Well, I think that this person was coming from the perspective of who's going to get this crap off of my, my, my property. My response was, well, actually based on where you're telling me it's at, it's not your property anyway. But I understand what you're saying. That actually inflamed the person's a bad comment on my part.
When we cut them down, we cut it all the way down and come back in the spring or summer and grind the stone, which I did, they were probably on High Street last year is what you're talking about. When they would trim and then leave a pile of logs lay there for a few days and then somebody would come back and clean them up.
Okay.
Is that problem was?
Yeah, um, probably, probably, especially if it was just a couple of days. I think it's a, um, it's just good to know. I, I have no complaint. I just wanna, wanted to understand and, and you've done that for me and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey Tyson?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt, but John, all the parks contracts, when we hire a tree service, it is their responsibility to take care of all the brush, all the wood, everything. And the reason we do that is, um, many years ago, there was some issues over wood and people burning wood and wanting wood and free wood. Um, and it got to be an issue. So then what we did is, is when we started issuing our contracts for tree service, it is the requirement of the tree service to fully remove everything. It is their responsibility. That way, we didn't have to deal with people calling us saying, well, I wanted that wood or he wanted that wood. You need to call the tree service. That's their responsibility.
Right. Well, that's helpful. Basically what you're saying, Ben, is, is we, when we contract with somebody, we contract for them to do the beginning and the end. And, and I think that was part of the issue, but now I understand more fully why it's confusing to the regular Brian citizen. Hopefully, if this is seen, um, especially by certain individuals, it would be understood a little bit better because it really, the first question is, who, who was, was responsible to take the tree down? Was it the city of Brian? Was it a contractual arrangement through the Brian Parks and Rec? So at least now I understand what questions to ask of whom, when, and that's helpful. Thank you.
Well, and again, with anything, John, um, for the citizens that are listening or will see this, if they have questions or concerns, they're always free to call the Parks and Recreation Department, call, talk to Cor Goshia. Um, he can help them through that. Um, Tyson and his guys are a huge help to us. They take care of the trees that we can't handle. Um, so that is, that is a huge help to us and BMU helps them with that. So I do appreciate all that Tyson and his guys do to help the Parks Department out with the terrace trees.
I think they just contact me because I'm so well-liked and popular. That's funny. I was trying to be funny. No, and I appreciate people contacting me. I'd just like to be able to answer their questions. And I also do deflect to, to, um, you supervisors and unit managers, uh, and tell them to get ahold of you because it does get somewhat complicated. Thank you to, to Tyson and Ben.
Anything else for Tyson? Thank you, Tyson. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks Tyson. You do a great job. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have, um, item number sixteen, the city of the, or state of the city before the mayor.
Evening. Twenty twenty was quite a year, and I want to start out by thanking the department heads, employees, city council, and Board of Public Affairs for continuing to work for the citizens in the midst of a worldwide pandemic. Twenty twenty started off as normal, and on March tenth, we were advised that COVID-19 was in the United States and we needed to prepare accordingly. I instructed department heads to freeze spending on the majority of items budgeted for twenty twenty until we could reevaluate the situation. We discussed department strategies on how to protect our employees and the public, and we did suspend some services for about a month and also ask some employees to adjust their shifts to prevent the possibility of an entire department becoming sick or quarantined. We must keep in mind the early warning, warnings from the CDC regarding the number of projected deaths. I am thankful to say that after a year, we as a community have learned how to live and prosper under the guidelines we have been given. I cannot think, say thank you enough for the commitment from our leadership and employees in the city of Brian. Since two thousand eight, we have seen over eleven million dollars worth of investments on commercial and industrial building permits and four-point-six million dollars in residential permits. Brian is continuing to move forward towards growth. I am proud to represent the city and serve on several boards, a few to highlight our executive council member of Maumee Valley Planning Organization, first vice president of the WEDCO Board, District One Board Member of Ohio Municipal League, executive board member of Ohio Municipal Electric Association, our countywide strategic planning committee, where we have partnered with Bowling Green State University, Williams County COVID Defense Task Force, and Williams County High Five to Thrive, which is new, promoting positive engagement between our senior citizens, children, business owners, and residents. Through these board appointments and connections, we really did have the ability to call people throughout the state with pandemic questions. I'm sure that you remember in the spring, there were a lot of things that were, um, suspended for parks, for police, for fire, and, um, we were able to navigate some of those murky waters through the contacts that we have at the state. I'd like to start now by highlighting a few areas from the PowerPoint that was sent out to council and media regarding twenty twenty-one. Our budget carryover for twenty twenty was three million dollars. Typically, we average one point two to one point eight million on that carryover. The city's budget for twenty twenty-one is estimated at twenty-eight point one million with BMU budgeted for twenty-eight point six million. So while we are looking forward from this pandemic, um, I think both sides of the city did a really good job of being conservative in their budgets, working on some projects that were necessary. Um, I know BMU did, um, plan some in-house projects as well. We still have five lots available for sale in our industrial park on Wilson Street and also continue to work diligently on the marketing and potential sale of our seventy-eight acre authenticated site at the Industrial Park North. Projects for twenty twenty-one include a burn building rebuild, weather warning sirens upgrade, planning and zoning code upgrades, cremation niches at Fountain Grove Cemetery, imagination station restroom upgrades, more in East End pool upgrades that will include hands-free restroom facilities, sanitary sewer replacements in the area of Avenue A and B, town line rotary paving, Brunacardi Way reconstruction and repaving. Forty-one percent of that construction cost was approved as reimbursable grants by the Ohio Public Works District Committee in December, and the grant agreement will follow in July. And then also, um, deer field spot concrete repairs and Parkview and Belmont Street improvements. Lastly, I have been working with Amtrak on advancing a long-planned project for a new passenger rail station to replace the shelter at Page and Lynn Streets. I was given the permission today and am very pleased to announce that Amtrak plans to break ground in September on a new three-point-three million dollar enclosed passenger station with restroom and three-hundred-foot-long train boarding platform that will also comply with Americans with Disabilities Act. New lighting, signage, and accessible parking spaces will also be part of this project. We are certainly looking forward to this groundbreaking investment in Brian. Does council have any questions for me?
That Amtrak is great news, Carrie, for mayor. It's great news.
It's hard, isn't it? Carrie and mayor, I go by both all the time. Um, yeah.
Exciting.
I have to be very honest. I got a call about a year ago from someone in their research and real estate development that wanted to basically reduce their footprint and their lease was coming due. So one of the reasons that council got that lease a little later than normal is because I have been debating them for a year to go with the plan that they promised us over a decade ago and, um, have been successful in that thankfully. And I have an email that I got today that I could announce it tonight.
Congratulations.
Anything else, anybody? Can we go on or?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, we will, um, go around the room, or I should say go over on the computer screen. Is there anyone from the city that would like to add anything for tonight? Anyone from BMU? All right, we're gonna start at the bottom of my screen this time, which gives it to Jim Cosenplack.
Yay. So I like to thank, uh, patrolman Roche for his service. Uh, best of luck in your future endeavors. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Gary Hussey for his service. Uh, we're sad to see him go, but, um, we thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank Christopher Roberts for his service. Uh, best of luck. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Bested Interest for their donation, uh, for the K-nine unit. Uh, very much appreciated. I, and that's all I got tonight. Oh, and thank Tyson. Uh, you did a great job and, and thank the mayor. Uh, you do a great job as well.
Thank you, Jim. Next up on the computer screen is, um, John Betts.
Oh, uh, yeah, and it's pretty much ditto for me. I, I have the same, same thanks to patrolman Roche and, and Mr. Hussey, Mr. Roberts, and their service to Brian and the congrats, uh, to Mr. Tangis and his new position. I look forward to, uh, that taking off, um, and having, uh, summer events coordinated. I think that's a wise move, uh, and, um, helps out the, um, Brian Area Foundation with their investment, um, in that project, uh, which has been immense. Um, and also, um, I want to thank, uh, annual reports that were given and very helpful from, uh, the mayor and, uh, Tyson, uh, and also a, um, uh, thank you to Amtrak for their investment, um, in, uh, Brian. Um, I, I agree. I think that's a, um, very much needed and something that really tells everybody in Brian that Amtrak is invested in, in Brian. Um, and I just, I think that's great. I want to thank Carrie for all her hard work on that the past year or so. That's it.
Thank you, John. Up next, we have Judy Ayers. Every single thing that I had written down has already been covered. So thank you, Jim and John, for covering everything I was going to say. And I just ditto everything. Uh, thank you to Tyson and the mayor for their reports and everyone stay safe and, um... Thank you, Judy. Next, we have Rick.
Um, same thing. Uh, thank you to, uh, Mr. Rush, Rush, Hussey, and, uh, Roberts for their, uh, contribution to the city and best of luck in the future. Um, thank you to the seasonal employees for helping us out this next year. Uh, welcome aboard, Mr. Tangis, and I'm looking forward to the activities out at the amphitheater. Um, want to thank the mayor for keeping the city on, on the tracks. Uh, pun intended with the, uh, Amtrak situation. Uh, thank you to Tyson. Um, the street department always continues to amaze me with the way that they're able to take care of things. Uh, they, they do a lot and it is very much appreciated. Um, it's not a glamorous job a lot of times, but it is very much appreciated. And last, but certainly not least, uh, I just want to thank Chief Siders. And the reason I'm saying that is because I got to watch up close and personal the, uh, fire department in action this last week. And, uh, let me tell you, they are fabulous. Um, just the things that they are willing to do. It was cold out and they are going into a burning, um, building and up on roofs with snow on them, all in an effort to try to, uh, help us out as, as, uh, community members. And I was very, very impressed and very appreciative of, uh, what we have there. And I just wanted to thank you, Siders, and the entire fire department for what they do. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Rick. Um, Lori, do you have anything?
Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda, do you have anything?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Uh, mayor, do you have anything?
Um, I just have a couple things because I don't think I can repeat myself too often in this. This year has been really tough on our department heads, our employee, our administration, and they have risen to the occasion every time. We have, we've had bumps in the road. Getting everyone to buy into the mask culture was hard for all of us. None of us like masks. We know that. Um, but they've just done a really good job of being good employees and being good bosses and being good community members. So I just want to thank them again. And I too am really excited about the new hire in parks. I can't wait to get that amphitheater up in action. Um, and lucky for us, it was done in the middle of a pandemic and it's one thing we know we don't have to close because it's an outdoor event. And, um, I'm, I'm just really excited about that. And I know there is plans for interactive fountains to be constructed sometime this spring. And if you are on Facebook, there is actually a Brian Amphitheater page that is run by someone from the foundation committee, and it's got a picture of what those interactive fountains look like with the landscaping around it, and it's gorgeous. So I cannot wait for that as well. And certainly thank Brian Area Foundation, um, the Parks Department, Engineering Department, BMU, um, everyone that worked with the foundation, um, to get that plan in place. So with that, I am finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna, uh, agree with everyone on what everyone just said. Um, but I'm also gonna second what was Rick said. Until you see the fire department in close action, you have no clue what they do. Cause I know I lived it a couple of years ago and Rick just lived it. So you have to really appreciate what our fire department does. Um, so I, they, they risk our lives for us and it's greatly appreciated. Um, with that, council is going to go into executive session to discuss compensation of personnel and acquisition of property. So, um, everyone have a wonderful evening.
Bye.